I call this meeting on the County Board of Commissioners to order our first order of visitor vocation by our Deputy County Manager, David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. If everyone would bow their heads with me. Heavenly Father, we ask for your divine guidance and wisdom as the Commissioners conduct the business of the county tonight. We ask for your eternal blessings upon our men and women in our military, and we ask these blessings in your holy name. Amen.
David Cotton, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff Miller, it's glad to have you in the House tonight. It's always a pleasure for you to be here. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silence or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes. Each must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be at any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizen can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speaking will be acknowledging the order in which they signed up, speak, and will be address of comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioners. Speaker will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front left of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responsibility for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye carries unanimously. The consent agenda, does any Commissioner want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to pull item B for discussion purposes.
Okay, we will move that to 5E, the agenda item. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Our next item is a public comment. Citizens have the opportunity to address the Board for up to three minutes. Deputy County Manager, David?
Mr. Vice Chairman, no one has signed up for the first public comment session.
Okay, we have a public hearing, and one public hearing is scheduled during this session. Public hearing proposal installment financing agreement for four projects, 2016, limited obligation bonds. At this time, I will open the public hearing, call on Deputy County Manager to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioners, the public hearing was published in the Jacksonville Daily News not less than ten days before the date of this public hearing. A copy of the notice has been provided within the agenda materials. At this time, I will call upon the Finance Director, Mr. David McColl, to describe the project as currently proposed and the current plan of the county to finance a portion of the cost of this project.
Good evening, Board. The total cost of the issuance of, that we're looking to go to the market for is $50.334 million. It comprises of four projects, and I just want to say upfront that the projects are, the debt service that's going to be incurred on the issuance of this debt for these four projects, the debt service will be serviced by the Capital Reserve Fund, and this was always in our planning tool that we use in Capital Reserve, that these four projects would be factored into that to be able to pay future debt service on these four projects. The first project is the Onslow County Courthouse. The project is budgeted at $20 million, and it, the land that will be built on is adjacent to the courthouse facility and also adjacent to the new jail. It will house new courtrooms, judges' chambers, jury rooms and associated spaces. There will also be secured parking for the judges and staff in the facility, and there will also be some renovation that will also be done on the Somerset Building. So that will, that's the first project that we will be financing. The next one is Richland's Elementary School, and the property will be adjacent to the Richland's Steed Park property. The property is owned by the Board of Education. I just want to let you know that we'll be using the construct, we'll be using the school as collateral for the issuance of the debt of, for this financing. The building will, the school facility will house up to 1,000 students. It's also going to provide finance furniture and also technological implementation into the building will also be factored into this project, and there will also be kitchen equipment that will be factored into the financing of this project. There's also going to be work done to provide more than adequate parking for the staff and the visitors to the complex, and there's also going to be some recreational facilities that will be part of this project that we'll be financing. The next project is a Consolidated Human Services Building. It's phase two. It's dealing with the parking, addressing the parking needs of the facility. As we know, we went to the market in September of last year for the Consolidated Human Services Building. This is phase two of this project. Once the Consolidated Human Services Building is complete, we are looking to put additional parking, create 400 additional parking spaces that's going to encompass this project. Thing to keep in mind is we're also going to have to demolish the Health Department and do demolition to what is the Sexton Building that's on the property. Once the Consolidated Human Services Building is complete, the Health Department will be moving into the Consolidated Human Services Building, and that's when a demolition will occur. And the last project is, it's a Justice Complex, HAVC. It's at $1.7 million. We need to upgrade the capacity of the units to be able to adequately air-condition the cells in the Justice Complex. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the projects or the description.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions?
Mr. McColl, have you provided the necessary documents to the Board of Commissioners, including the installment financing agreement, trust agreement, deed of trust and security agreement, agreement concerning Richland's Elementary School lease?
Yes, I have.
I've got just one question.
Yes, sir.
It's really not for me, but I think if you could explain to the public and to the Board why it's possible and what benefits it is to use the school as collateral for loans for other county facilities and what benefits we get from that.
Well, one of the things you need to keep in mind, we have to come to the rating agencies and meet with them and go over the financing. We have standards and pores that we'll be meeting with, and also Moody's. Moody's requires that we put up at least, say now we're going to go to the market for $50.334 million. We're required to issue, 50% of the collateral has to cover this debt issuance. So Richland's Elementary School is the largest portion of this debt issuance. It's 25 point, it's 25.344 million. So the reason why we're using Richland's Elementary School is because that will get us to the 50% requirement that Moody's requires to issue a rating on the debt that we're going to issue, and that's the reason why we're using Richland's Elementary School as collateral. Now, if we had, for an example, another property that was larger than that, say it was reversed and the courthouse was 25 million, then we would use the courthouse because that would meet our 50% criteria.
That satisfies my...
Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, at this time, it would be appropriate to receive comment from the public, and no one has signed up at the back of the room. And if it pleases the Board, I will make one call to the audience.
Go ahead.
At this time, I will make a call to the audience if anyone would like to approach the podium to speak on the financing. Okay, seeing no one approaching. Madam Clerk, has the Clerk's Office received any written statements?
We have not received any statements.
Okay. With input from the public received or not received, this item is available for Commissioner action.
Commissioners, possible motion to proceed with the proposed financing of a portion of the cost of the project and to approve on primary basis such installment financing agreement to finance a portion of the cost of the project in the amount of not to exceed $50,999,000 substantially as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Item five, would a Commissioner like to introduce the item for consideration?
I will introduce the item five for consideration to a resolution approving the proposed sale of Onslow County Public Facilities Company of limited obligation bonds payable from certain installment payments to be made by the County of Onslow, North Carolina pursuant to a proposed installment financing agreement to finance a portion of the cost of various projects, approving certain documents and actions relating thereto and authorizing certain actions in Make that in the form of a motion.
Make it in the form of a motion. Commissioner Bright, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have item 5B. Mr. Deputy County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. If it pleases the Board, before moving on, that last two items that we just went through was rather regimented and scripted, but the purpose is, since this is a large borrowing, all the i's and all the t's had to, all the i's had to be dotted and all the t's needed to be crossed, so that was really the reason that it was that scripted. So moving forward, rules for rabies post-exposure management. We do have some proposals and measures that we would like for the Board to consider, and at this time, I'll call on the Health Director, Ms. Angela Lee, and our Animal Services Director, Mr. Howard Martin, to present that item.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Cotton. The Division of Public Health has recommended that all local Boards of Health or those acting as Boards of Health adopt the model rule that you have attached. Adoption of the 2016 Rabies Compendium Post Exposure Management Control Measures for Dogs and Cats was published by the National Association of Public Health Veterinarians. It allows for the legal authority for local Health Directors to implement the new rabies control measures and would align North Carolina's control measures with national recommendations and guidance. The new control measures would likely result in fewer dogs and cats euthanized, shorter quarantine periods, and would also allow for more 45-day owner observations for lapsed animals with documentation. These changes represent significant emotional and estimated financial benefits to animal owners, and they would also help maintain the safety of public health in North Carolina. We respectfully request the adoption of the model rule for rabies post-exposure management of dogs and cats.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye carries unanimously. Deputy Manager, would you do C? C and D, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The next item is the Transportation and Security Administration Other Transactions Agreement Grants and Project Ordinance for our baggage system upgrade, and at this time, I'll call on Mr. Chris White, our Airport Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Albert J. L.S.C. Airport experiences a much higher-than-average number of checked bags per passenger, and a typical bag is also heavier. This presents challenges to anyone handling or screening baggage. Since many of these bags are checked by military personnel, more hand screening is also required. The TSA desires to partner with the county on a project designed to increase baggage screening throughput, thereby improving passenger and airline satisfaction. The TSA was initially approached about this project during the terminal design, however was not financially able to participate at that time. The project will involve design and installation of additional conveyors associated with the baggage screening system, resulting in less human interaction and faster processing. The TSA proposes to fund 95% of the design and construction through a reimbursable agreement known as an other transaction agreement. The initial design phase is covered by this agreement, and a separate agreement will be provided for construction once bid. The overall cost of design and construction is anticipated to not exceed $1 million. The 5% match will come from airport revenues, and no local tax dollars will be used. The specific action request is, the airport respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the OTA, approve all necessary budget documents, and include the project ordinance, and authorize the Chairman to execute the associated documents.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just got a question. This is additional convenience and additional baggage conveyor, or it just wasn't being able to be afforded at the time that we built the terminal?
When we designed the building, we anticipated that this may occur, so we, this will be an addition to the existing conveyor belt system. It will replace roller bed system that is where the bags are manually moved from one machine to the next machine to the next conveyor. This will automate that process, thereby making it a lot more efficient, a lot quicker, and actually, the TSA experiences a high level of workman's comp injuries. This will produce those as well.
And like it was in the presentation, it was not funded initially, and now it's funded, so we can add that convenience?
That's correct.
Have a motion and a second? Any, if that was discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye carries unanimously. David D.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. White to give us the details of the lease that he is proposing.
Air Inc., a division of Rockwell Collins, has provided digital in-flight and ground communication services to airlines for many years. Air Inc. has had equipment located OAJ for over a decade, and with the construction of the new passenger term and executive terminals at the airport, the equipment was relocated to the executive terminal. The initial one-year agreement is nearing expiration, and Air Inc. has requested a five-year lease agreement. This is a standard county lease agreement expiring on August 18, 2021. The requested action is the Board of Commissioners is respectfully requested to authorize the County Manager to execute the Air Inc. lease on behalf of the county.
Move that we approve?
Have a motion, do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
5E, that came off the consent agenda, David?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. That is the Hubert Volunteer Fire Department funding, and I will call on Mr. Norman Bryson, our Emergency Services Director, to present that in detail.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioners, I'd like to take a moment to talk about the history of how we've got here today, where we are. In 2011, Onslow County came out with a new set of fire and rescue contracts. Part of the stipulation in those new contracts for receiving funding from the county is that each agency that signed on to this contract had to get yearly an annual audit that was done by a certified public accountant. In the last several years, we've been following through with this process since 2011. Hubert Volunteer Fire Department has had an issue of actually being able to turn in an audit for the 2014 and 15 fiscal year. And as I said, this is a fiscal year, which the fiscal year ends on June 30th. They have six months to have an auditor go through their books, and there is a December 31st deadline of when those audits are turned in. The Hubert Volunteer Fire Department did turn in a document to us that was originally proposed to be an audit in January. After reviewing the audit, which was turned in by Mobile Financial Incorporated, it was found that they were not a certified public accountant agency, so we were not able to accept that audit. Because of the contract and not having the audit turned in, the county has been withholding the funds to Hubert Fire Department as stipulated by the contract since that time, so they have not received any funding from the county since the second week of November of 2015. In the last few months, the Hubert Volunteer Fire Department and their membership and Board of Directors, along with their auditor that they have, the second auditor that they've hired, has been meeting with the Fire and Rescue Commission and giving updates. In our last July meeting, they have come forward and said that they are to the point that they are about out of money, and they have asked for some form of relief while they're waiting for their audit to be completed. With saying that, I did talk with their auditor that they have hired out this morning. He is actually hoping to complete their audit for the 2014-15 year by the end of this week, if not by the first of next week. He's hoping to have it done and turned in to the county. So after meeting with the Fire and Rescue Commission, the Fire Rescue Commission has made a recommendation that the, to, for the county to release a certain amount of funds to the Hubert Volunteer Fire Department to keep them in operation. This has been passed up. Myself, as well as Melissa Moore-Freeman, the internal auditor, Mr. Jeremy Holly, the Fire Rescue Division Head, and Mr. Jeremy Foster, the Fire and Rescue Commission Chairperson, met with the membership of the Hubert while they came in and turned in for receipts that they have paid for the month of July and August, which would also include insurance payments and items like this for the county. We reviewed what they turned in to us and have come back with a dollar amount of $36,980.05. And we are recommending to the county that this one-time dispersment be released to Hubert Fire Department to help them, keep them in operation.
Well, I brought this up off of the consent agenda because I think it's important for the citizens to know that when a fire department has to shut their doors because of funding, that the people that's in that fire district, I mean, not talking about one fire district in this case, we're talking about a merger that happened a couple of years ago where we got two fire departments in that district now. So we've got a lot of people, there's at least 14,000, 15,000 people that live just in the Hubert District. So we've got a lot of people that would be affected if their insurance rate basically doubles or triples because the ISO rating would go to a 10, which is basically no fire protection at all. So that's why the Fire Commission and we decided to help them keep their doors open with receipts that they've been able to produce or bills that they've been able to produce to keep the doors open so they can get that audit done, so they can get back on their feet. Not sure whose fault it is or not sure what happened, but I certainly approve of forwarding some money so they can at least keep the doors open until they can get back on their feet.
One thing I will add, gentlemen, is that this is all for operational expenses. None of this is for new equipment. It is only operational to keep them moving forward.
I seen it was for fuel and engine repairs and transmission repairs.
There was a transmission repair.
Pay bill and stuff like that.
How about that transmission?
Sir?
Was that quoted in the paper, right? How much that transmission cost us?
I have not seen the paper, so I do not know what they quoted in the...
Price of transmission, $45,000.
I do not think that's correct because the amount of money that we're recommending is below the $45,000 that they quoted because we're only asking, we're only asking for $36,000.
I had it pretty long, didn't I?
I seen the numbers, but I didn't pay much attention to the paper. I'd like to see hard numbers from you.
I believe Ms. Melissa Moore-Freeman has actually put her numbers together if she's got anything that she would like to help add or present.
I don't have anything else. I move that we approve the money.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye carries unanimously. Item six, appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioners, the Onslow County Hospital Authority, that Board, of course, you know they serve as the governing body for Onslow Memorial Hospital, and as such, they are responsible for the daily operations, the long-range plans, the facility and all related health services. At its regularly scheduled meeting on June 30th of this year, the Hospital Authority voted unanimously to forward nominations for consideration for reappointment of incumbents whose terms expire September 30th of this year. The Board also voted to recommend an appointment to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Jamie McLaughlin, seat seven, who passed away on June 29th, 2016. Dr. K.V. George Thomas is being submitted as an additional name pursuant to Section Seven of the Joint Resolution dated July 16th of 2012. The following six individuals will be considered for the five available seats. Mr. Ed Catretz, incumbent, seat number three. Mr. Richard Pugh, incumbent, seat number four. Dr. Carol A. Johnston, incumbent, seat number eight. Ms. Julia Collins, incumbent, seat number nine. Dr. Ishwar Gobeshan, seat number seven. Seat vacant due to the passing of Mr. McLaughlin. And Dr. K.V. George Thomas as an additional name submitted. Staff has prepared ballots for the Board's convenience. All applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. So at this time, I'll take up the ballots for seat three.
And these ballots are signed by the Commissioners, and they're available for inspection after the meeting if anybody wants to look at them. Today, there's only three of the Commissioners sitting here today, so it takes all three of us to move anything around. It is not a majority vote, and it takes all three of us. So whatever happens here, if we have something that goes two to one, it would have to go on to the next meeting for that vote to count.
While we're tallying the votes, I'd like to recognize Mississippi Burnham County Hospital Offered Chairman of the Hospital Board, thanks for coming tonight, and the rest of the Board members, and hopefully, we can get this through with three people.
For seat number three, the Commissioners have selected Dr. K.V. George Thomas, and his name has been taken off the ballots for seat number four. For seat three, the board has selected Dr. K.V. George Thomas. For seat four, the board has selected Mr. Richard Pugh. For seat eight, the board has selected Dr. Carol A. Johnston. For seat nine, the board has selected Ms. Julia Collins. And for seat seven, the board has selected Dr. Gobeshan.
Thank you, and I want to thank the audience for their patience because we had so many to go through on the ballots. Item seven is consent agenda items. We've already handled that as five E. Item eight, public comment, David?
Mr. Vice Chairman, there are two individuals who have signed up for the second public comment period. In order to speak during the second public comment period, we ask that those approaching the Commissioners limit their comments to five minutes. The first person is Mr. Joe Caper, 147, Cattion Farm Lane, Jacksonville. Is that correct, sir?
Vice Chairman Buchanan and members of the board and Mr. Cotton. I come before you this evening as I did at last month's meeting as a representative of one of our county's citizen action groups, Onslow Protect Our Students. At last month's meeting, we came to present our concerns about what we considered to be the reckless, dangerous, and immoral comprehensive sexuality education hidden agenda of Shift NC and NC Youth Connected. This evening, we come to say thank you. We want to say thank you for enduring my presentation along with over 10 others at last month's meeting, staying late into the night. We want to thank you for not only listening, but for expressing your interest in following up on our concerns, even to the point of suggesting the possible commissioning of a committee to investigate the matter. And thank you for whatever action you may have taken to help us turn our concerns into encouraging Shift NC and NC Youth Connected to depart from Onslow County. We believe our children and youth, indeed our entire social and moral fabric will be healthier because of it. We also want you to know that we are not closing up shop. Our involvement in local matters over these last several months has revealed to many of us just how woefully uninformed and lackadaisical we have been when it comes to the everyday affairs of our local government and its boards and agencies. Also, we realize that just because a current threat to our moral security has slipped off the radar, it does not mean that it's disappeared forever. We understand our battle is not against flesh and blood alone, but against the powers of this dark world and even the spiritual forces of evil. We remain vigilant and active as a force for the good in all of our county. Furthermore, we realize Shift's departure has been disappointing for some of our county administrators who were hoping to capitalize on the financial lucre that Shift had brought to town. In the near future, I will be in contact with Mr. Hudson and if he is willing, we will ascertain a clearer understanding of the needs that our county had hoped to address with these federal grant monies. We vow to work with you to the greatest extent that a little volunteer organization with only a small number of passionate yet committed citizens possibly can to meet these needs and help our county to continue to build its legacy as the best county in North Carolina. We pray God's blessings and help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, the next person who has signed up is Mr. Dave Harris of 188, Deer Road, Hubert, North Carolina.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm sorry to hear our county managers planning on leaving us. The last year, I've found I've gotten clearer information from you than I have from anybody in years in this county. I'm sorry to see you go. Secondly, I'd like to thank our sheriff for what he's done the last year. That man has made a significant difference in our neighborhood over in the Hubert area. Off of Parktown Road, significant difference, much quieter, much better place to live. One of the things I want to raise tonight though is we need to take a hard look at our Clean County program. We are not doing our jobs correctly there. I've had three houses burned in my neighborhood in the last three years. None of them have been removed, cleared away. They're now infested, traps for vermin, stray animals, and yes, I've been working with them. We can't get nothing done. The way the program's set up, it takes years to get anything accomplished. We've been on one for over 18 months now, can't find the owner, can't get nothing done. Sits right on the corner of Parktown Road and Deer Road, I'm sorry, Doe Road, right there where everybody has to go past it every day, burnt out shell, been sitting there. Furthermore, only one person's ever been charged in connection with one of the three arson incidences and he's still out free. He's not been put in jail yet. So you could say we got some issues there, but that's not a fault of our sheriff. He did catch and charge one at least and I think he's done a good job doing that because it's quieted down a lot. Our Clean County needs to take a hard look at a lot of things other than just what I mentioned. We have a lot of abandoned houses throughout this county just sitting there. They're serious eyesores. They are causing a lot of problems for a lot of neighbors, not just in my neighborhood, but everywhere. You go down Piney Green Road, you'll see a number of them. Now, I realize part of that's due to that highway project, but still shouldn't be growing up to the top of the roads with combination trash, weeds and whatever. The place needs to be cleaned up. We need to get our Clean County program moving. I do have questions also regarding our Hubert Volunteer Fire Department since I lived there. We have had an excellent fire department there for many years. Our new change of management last couple of years have left me some serious questions. To answer your question, Mr. Jarman, it was $14,000 and some hundred dollars for that transmission. There was also, I believe, another $14 or $1600 for transmission linkage. I'm not sure if it was on the same truck or not. Quite honestly, I did not put the two together, but who's playing with them, tearing things up so bad? It's a lot of money and you and I know we really don't have that much extra laying around to just throw away in this county. We've got a lot of things that need to be addressed, so we need to take a hard look at that. When I tried to talk to our management group there and our fire department there about some of the, let's just say, some of the junior members who they were bringing in who might not be truly desirable, especially since several of them are part of our issues in our neighborhood, I pretty much got told it's their project. They didn't care what the neighborhood and the people in the community thought. So I will not support them financially and I have supported them for over 25 years, but as of this year, I will no longer support them unless they can clean out their firehouse. I think somebody needs to take a hard look at this and, as you mentioned it, who was at fault with this not being done correctly? There seems to be a serious issue with arrogance in that department now that did not exist prior to this. So somebody needs to look hard at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ben, would you get that gentleman's name and see what you can find out for us? Mr. Ben Warren, he's in the back, sir, gentleman in the suit back there. See what he can get for you, see what we can find out in reference to this issue.
Mr. Vice Chairman, there is no one else who has signed up for the second.
Managers' comments?
I have none tonight. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Bright?
Yeah, just a couple. Thank you for allowing me. I'd like to, again, thank the hospital and the hospital board for getting the hospital in the black and getting us back where we're not in a situation where we're in the red. There's a couple or two or three troubling things to me, not with our hospital, but with the different medical institutions moving into Jacksonville. And it seems that those institutions that's moving in are the ones that are being paid by people that pay. And I know when Onslow Memorial gets somebody that goes to their door, they can't turn them down whether they pay or not, and that's kind of troubling. And I know it's on your radar. So Penny and Pat and the rest of the board members, sometime or another, I'd like to myself meet with you and see what we can do to enhance the board members and the participation and see exactly what is on the radar for the hospital and what we can do as Commissioners to try to, or what I can do as a Commissioner to try to help you get through some of the difficult times and maybe look at some of the things that we can do as far as the authority of appointing board members to try to help you out. So thank you for being here tonight and I appreciate you taking the time to be at our meeting. That's all I have.
Deb Se.
I have it, Mr. Chair.
I want to thank everybody for being here. Joe, thank you for that information that you passed on us. I appreciate it. Richard Garbett, will you come forward for a second? Gabbit, is that how you say it? Gabbar?
Gabbit.
Get it right, get it right for me, Julie. We, as the county Commissioners, want to thank you for what you do. We've heard a lot of, I mean, favorable for the work that you do and the outstanding job that you do. These secretaries and our clerks and everything else tell us how they pick up the phone, call you and you're right on there to take care of everything that's taking place with our poor animal control situation. And Mr. Martin, I want to thank you for having this gentleman work for us. It's a pleasure to have you with us, my friend. Would you like to say anything?
No, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to get his cell, I'd like to get his cellphone number.
Thank you for coming up. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and I want to thank the hospital for being here too. And Penny, thank you for what you do and the board and what you do, Mr. Alford and everyone. I appreciate it and I've worked with several of you in the past and I hope to work with you in the future. Thank you for being here and good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. We're adjourned.[1758.12]